... Bye, bye. We end our session with a review now. Our meeting begins by the City Council meeting of March 6th, 2024. We have a vote for it from January 17th, 2024. We vote for this one by City Clerk. We have no vote against. We have ordinance since second meeting. We have number one. And ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17, DCZ, zoning. Number two and ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, DCZ, number six. We are in some various locations. Number three, and ordinance two amend this relevant plan for the current development plan area in the city of New Brunswick. We have ordinances of first meeting. Number one, and ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, vehicles and traffic, DCZ penalties for party violations. Then we have resolutions, number 34, except number 32. Resolution number one, approve amendment amendment. Two, approve payment, free authorized refund for the intact sales certificate. Four, approve resolution authorizing a number of understanding between the city of New Brunswick Police Department and the University Board of Education. Five, authorize purchase by the Department of Planning for the Canadian Economic Development. A four, program equipment with VCP per company, they all see. Six, authorize application acceptance and solicitation of grant agreement for 2024 for this 2024 safe as a community ground program. Seven, approval of additional bids, authorizes to be bid for government technical assistance services. Eight, compromise professional service agreement with Excal, that is seen from business as Victorian digit. Nine, approve amendment of resolution 022433 with incentive is persistent to invest as prescribed corporation. Number 10, approve amendment of resolution 012442 with incentive is persistent to invest as prescribed corporation. Eleven, approve amendment of resolution 1229, incentive taking improvement preparation. Twelve, approve resolution to refer amendments for the landing of an code to the planning board to review and import. Thirteen, approve resolution to refer amendment to the zoning ordinance to the planning board to review and import. Fourteen, approve resolution authorizing an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone in amount of $300,000. Fifteen, approve resolution authorizing an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone for the New Jersey PC. Seventeen, amount of $155,000. Sixteen, approve resolution authorizing an application to the New Jersey Urban Enterprise Zone for zone assistance points for the New Jersey PC for improved cash camps for U C zone in amount of $150,000. Seventeen, approve new local license with special relief for 2022, for each one, DCZ where this is for the law. Eighteen, approve border contract with French and Farero Associates here. Nineteen, approve border contract with DCZ or system with business as prescribed corporation. Twenty, approve with extension of the signals awareness and road closure because of by making earning. Twenty-one, approve border contract with Pointe and Farero Associates here. Twenty-two, approve amendment of resolution 072310 with Peterson Service Company. Twenty-three, authorized tax collector to travel with payments with several taxes in the TVD accounts. Twenty-four, approve amendment of resolution 092360 with Britain Allied Trucking, they'll see, doing business as Allied Order. Twenty-five, approve border contract with Green Line Company, Chemtray Chemicals Corporation, Middlebar Solutions, New South River Ultimate Plant, Paris Corporation, and Bridge Technology East. Twenty-six, approve West Coast Street, Nova City with certified brokers, University of New Brunswick. Twenty-seven, authorized refund to Stevens Piso in the amount of $5,427,91. Twenty-eight, authorized refunds will be aggregated in the amount of $1,654,74. And nine, approve border contract with Tech Tech Field. Thirty, approve resolution to authorize a municipal services agreement titled for the nine agreement and Drifton Avenue, dance game improvement and maintenance again with RTF and the earlier green rules, they also. Thirty-one, authorization to advertise for E Avenue border system improvements. Thirty-two has been held at the choice of the City Clerk. Thirty-three, authorized application and acceptance of grant with federal emergency management agency. And thirty-four, authorized application and acceptance of grant with federal emergency management agency. Then we have by this police motion by the council, then the public comment and base to be members of City Council, we have a review session. The next one will be Wednesday, March 20th, March 30th, and the City Council will follow immediately at us after the review session. At this time, please hold order.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Here.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Here.
Council President Escobar.
Here. Please be advised that the mortgage requirements of the October 20th Act has been complied and satisfied in our VA notice which gave sufficient notice of a time and place and contact of all police units of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick has been filed with the City Clerk, has been placed on an appropriate holding of the city home, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the city of New Brunswick, namely the Home Ministry.
I applaud the United States of America and the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I just want to take this moment. This past Friday was employee appreciation day, so I want to take this moment to recognize and express my heartfelt gratitude to all our city employees for their hard work, dedication, commitment, and contribution to our city. It is the work that they do day in, day out that make a difference in our city, so I thank you for that. Your astounding work, this will be appreciated and valued by all of us. Thank you.
Please turn your motion to the minutes of February 27th. It's 17, sorry. I moved the minutes of the day of reserving.
I said.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. But I clear has the correspondence been directed to the appropriate departments?
Yes, Madam President. The correspondence received by the City clerk's office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
We have ordinance for discussion the second meeting. We have ordinance 02244, ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 17 zoning. This is in reference to expect the C2A zone at a parcel of the privacy. Do any other council members have any questions or any comments of this particular ordinance? Say none. We are preparing to open the public hearing on these ordinance only. You have up to five minutes to address the council. The council, if any member of the public wishes to address the council on these particular orders, please come forward. Say none. Move the ordinance.
Sorry. Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. We have ordinance 022437, and ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, Chapter 10, 2012, traffic control regulations, Schedule 22, traffic control standards. We are adding by your street, French and Prospect, and Jersey Avenue on Hill.
Any questions for my fellow councilmembers? Yes. We are preparing to open the public hearing now on these ordinance only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. If you have any questions, please, or any comments, please come forward.
Hi, yes, I'm your host, Mrs. Hensley. I can speak to Mr. Tanguelli and Mr. Ron Saunders on this matter. It's good that this project has been done, but I hope that this goes through. I hope this will be approved as well due to I still see too safety issues at these, with these lights and hopefully that that was because the school changed their plans on locking the road off due to where how the lights are changed by the sensors and due to with the road being closed off, the light does not change soon enough due to where it it will stay green on Jersey Avenue not longer. So the issue is with the crossing guards and how sometimes the kids are very impatient, what due to where I'm just hoping that this will be turned on automatic due to where it will say when to walk and when to do not walk. Because like I said, due to where he he explained that the Board of Education should have spoke upon the them closing the roads off, no one making a left turn in as the road was made, but I agree that it's safer to be closed off the way they do it, but creating an issue due to where prolonging the light from changing, even if you do press the button, do you have very kids who are in very impatient where the crossing guards have to try to hold them back. I have several videos on that as well, due to where wow, don't want anyone to get hit there. And I have to say this, it's not as bad with the situation that wired and of French, but like I said, I'm glad to see the projects were done and just hopefully to be upgraded to turned on with the automatic, with the walk signs, it would be much safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Say none.
Move the ordinance, sorry. Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
Then we have ordinance 022438, and ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick before we go. Mr. Dominius, oh, there you are. So, Mr. Dominius, if you could give an overview of these particular ordinance, please.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So this particular amendment to the ordinance addresses some modifications to the parent redevelopment plan, otherwise you might know it as the hub or the helix. They're mostly regarding modifications to accommodate the incoming proposal from Nokia Bell Labs for the the second phase of the building, including some minor stuff like flag holes, accessory structural use setups, the sizing for other parcels as there's going to be sort of a pedestrian walk facility through the middle that'll be privately owned, but sort of a patio or walk, and so that'll create its own parcel, and addressing the nuances of that as well as a museum and making sure that's permitted uses. Nokia Bell Labs will have an open to the public, I believe, museum as a component of their establishment. And then looking forward toward Phase Three, which would be a residential, well, mixed-use building, commercial, medical office, probably on the first five or six floors with residential above. The H3 building is probably going to be somewhere, they're they're looking at mid to high 400 feet, probably about 464, 70 feet in height for that building, although not many units, about 210 or so, a very tall, skinny building. And so there's a component that increases the maximum height to 500 feet, but the Nokia Bell Labs building is probably going to come in in the two, high 200s around 270, 280 or so.
Thank you. Any questions for my fellow councilmembers? Yes. Okay, now we are preparing to open the the public hearing on these ordinance only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. Any members of the public wishes to address the council on this?
Good evening, Council. Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I wanted to ask about that third phase. What is the current status of it? Is there a timeline for when an application might be submitted or when construction might start?
Mr. Dominius, do you have another question?
Um, to to date, no. I've heard optimistic rumblings of maybe a submission later this year, maybe early next year. This is just one piece of something we know that would be a component of H3, the height. I'm imagining most likely that there will be future amendments regarding specifics to H3 to the plan months from now, maybe later this year, early next year.
Thank you.
And how about the land itself? Has it been cleaned up? Does it, you know, still have an environmental problem?
Mr. Dominius.
Um, I I don't actually know this reference to this environmental problem. If there's any cleanup on the site, they're doing it, but I'm not aware of anything certainly not related to H3 or any of the other components in terms of environmental issue on the site.
Thank you.
Is it possible that the head engineer could could come in?
Mr. Valenti.
I can answer to that. The, there are two different issues that are going on with the location. One is a, an old hydrocarbon plume from tanks over in the county building. That pretty much has been remediated. They've done chemical injection that have treated the subsurface ground water. I believe that's within parameters, so that that is tipped about coming to an end. I don't know about the dry cleaner solve, but typically it's a much smaller issue.
Thank you, Mr. Valenti. Anything else?
Um, yeah, just on the pedestrian pathway, um, you know, it sounds like a good thing. Is there any reason that it has to be private, privately owned, can't develop or make that public land? Wouldn't that make the most sense if it's going to be a public space?
So to the developer.
Well, they're asking you for something here, so.
So you may says to the police presenter, if any changes happen, you know, but so far this is for me now. But thank you for the.
Okay. It does say Section 1F about creating new retail and recreational opportunities and new jobs. Can you give any insight into what what we're talking about there, particularly with the recreation? Is that just the pathway or more stuff?
That's just sort of boilerplate as the buildings have commercial components, there's the ability for recreational activities to be commercial components in these buildings as well as, you know, restaurants, cafes, et cetera. It's just sort of resolution boilerplate for the redevelopment plan.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I do think that, you know, many members of the public want this place to be a place where they can go and enjoy it without having to spend money, you know? So I think that at least some of the land should be set aside for, you know, something similar to a park. And I think that that's, you know, this hints at it, but doesn't guarantee us anything other than this privately owned walkway, which I'm already seeing, you know, the potential for for issues with that. I would I would like to see something more concrete about what types of recreation this project will bring us if you're, you know, proceeding to approve this today. Hopefully we get more information soon.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Say none? Move the ordinance.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Castaneda.
Do we notice? Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes. We have an ordinance on first meeting, and ordinance 02241, and ordinance two amend as a permanent device in our ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, vehicles and traffic, DCZ penalty with party violations.
I move the ordinance sitting there March 20th, 2024, 5:30 PM, same date of the hour cuts.
I said.
Councilmember Castaneda.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sephora Ludwig.
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Council President Escobar.
Yes.
We have resolutions, number 34, and resolution 32. Before we go into the resolutions, suspend your, my councilmembers have a review. Any questions?
Uh, yes. For item 13, the approved resolution for the Blue Baby signage. I'm aware that one of the areas that they're going to be crossing now will be on Somerset Street, will have Harvey. I do have a concern on that particular area, the prospect of Harvey on Somerset where the senior members. With respects to being a nuisance would be the bright lights at night, and so I was wondering if we could, you know, consider having a a time limit in terms of how late the lights can be on to maybe eight o'clock. I don't believe that that would need a change in the resolution if I'm if I'm understanding that correctly.
Mr. Dominius.
Yes. Um, right, so the, if there's, for that section, if the council wants there to be a a PM limitation on the illumination, that could just go in the the draft that goes to the planning board as the ordinance for review, and it, the resolution just refers the ordinance, so there's no need to amend the resolution or take any action of that sort.
So before we go forward, I have a few questions, no questions, but I would like to ask some things to clarification and review some of the orders that we have. Lieutenant Hoover, you first. I have a few, if you could talk a little bit, I can go over you, there's a couple of resolutions that we have related to the new police department. So if you could talk a little about, I want to talk about four, six, and eight, so you want to start with number four?
The MOU, that is something that is signed between virtually all police departments and school boards in the in the state, and all that does is seal that the police department will act according to policies that are in place when dealing with law enforcement operations in schools. Simple as that. It's a very lengthy document that everyone signs.
Great, thank you. Number six?
Six is a grant that we apply for every year, and it is a partial offset of salaries for two sworn members.
There were $2,000, why is the grant?
$45,000.
And is part of that going to be a smootage for the officers that are working there at rates?
Correct.
And number eight?
Number eight, this is a professional partnership that we have, and this provides us with policy maintenance and consultation for accreditation. Accreditation is centered around strict policies, and that's, we keep everything on track and sign for and do a little for this company.
Thank you. Mr. Dominius, resolutions 14, 15, and 16, I know they're kind of dated, but there's definitely a different section for all of them. If you could talk a little bit about those.
Sure. So as part of any submission to the Urban Enterprise Zone Authority to be able to use our allocated funds, we have to adopt a resolution requesting the specific project that we want to use the funds for. The, going in order, first one, we're looking to supplement and subsidize for marketing and events in the, in these commercial corridors. It's pretty typical in the other UEZs for the UEZ to use its funding to pay for things like the holiday festivals or Oktoberfest, things like that. So this funding for that component would be for those types of events and marketing. For the second piece, that's for clean teen funding. We did it last year for clean teen for July through June, so that amount of funding would expire at the end of that June 30th this year, so this would be for this Ju- July for next June. And then the last one is for solar powered compacting trash cans that alert the trash drivers to when they need to be picked up, as well as by compacting will have fewer needs to be picked up as frequently, so improve efficiency and cleanliness in the urban enterprise zone areas.
And the trash can will be placed in different areas?
They'll be, they'll be in the urban enterprise zone areas throughout. They'll be used to replace existing cans, outdated ones, and in certain cases, if applicable, might supplement those, but we're looking to primarily replace existing can infrastructure.
Thank you. And Mr. Shami, if you could talk to me a little bit about some questions about number 30?
Certainly, I am the Council President of the Council. Number 30, seats authorization, highway resolution, that have the city enter into three separate agreements. These agreements refer to the project that the LUSA Development Group is currently undertaking at the old Sears and Robins site. It's a unique project. The approvals that were obtained by the developer require that the project developer maintain all of the infrastructure, all of these services on that particular site, whether it be sewer, water, electricity, roads, plowing, garbage pickup, all of those municipal services that we commonly expect municipality to provide are being provided by the developer with respect to this particular project at this particular site. The municipal services agreement solidifies and sets forth those obligations of the developer. The second agreement is the Clifton Avenue Landscape Improvement Maintenance Agreement. There is what is commonly known as the Sears Hilton Buffer that was put in back in the late 50s, 60s when Sears initially developed the site to protect the residential areas, top matter, and the United Neighborhood. Part and parcel of the approval in the agreement to allow the developer to develop that particular site, and in a manner which they sought and received approval for, is that they have to maintain that buffer in perpetuity with respect to cutting the grass, making sure the trees get trimmed properly, any any revegetation or reforestation is necessary, they will, they will incur the cost and expense of that. That's the second agreement. The third agreement is, is a Title 39 agreement. You see this on a regular basis with respect to development thereby. The planning board will require that the owner of the property, the private entity, enter into a Title 39 agreement, which allows for our municipal police department to enforce Title 39 violations on that site. So those are the three agreements that that are made up in this resolution.
Thank you. Any questions for the council members? So at this time, we all with the floor, we will comment on the resolutions only. You have up to five minutes per person, one time up. We hope that we can address the council on these resolutions. Please come to the microphone.
Yes, and first I would like to just say, well, I just love how you gave it, let everyone speak on each department, speak of what these resolutions were on certain occasions instead of a person coming up asking, and then that uses their time with explaining what it was. I would give you thumbs up on that if we can continue doing that, announcing what the resolution is, the meaning of it for, what it for, that'd be great. Now, I'll start with 16, where, what was with these trash cans? I hope the city, before you go ahead and spend a load of money on trash cans again like you just did last year with all these new cans, thinking, ooh, just because the top was smaller, ooh, you were gonna have less garbage issues due to where, wow, with those trash cans, due to where how you open them up, what, all the garbage falls down out, making a, making a more mess than anything. So please, before you really buy a load of equipment, make sure and know how it works properly where it won't create a problem of cleaning up more garbage, due to where I had put up videos and I even mentioned this before, was showing, wow, you open it up and wow, it just overcrowded and all the garbage just falls, falls, falls out, meaning, whoa, you would think that smaller hole, less work, it was more work with these new cans and creating much more garbage on the streets. So please, investigate and see how the cans work first before you really buy a ton of them, putting them a load around the city, because regardless, the point is, no matter what type of garbage can, the thing that needs to be done, give out tickets, stop these people from bringing their garbage to these cans from their house and then from Franklin and other townships as well. Does New Brunswick Police Department want to inspect you to do that? Wow, I've had it on video before. What, did, did, did New Brunswick do anything with a man dumping his garbage in there? No, no. So like I said, if you speak on things, if you want to make better, well, let the workers do the right thing and, like I said, stop it because New Brunswick was not this dirty before. And I will say, due to where, now I just hear, and that's why I'm saying glad to hear on four, where, where normally I don't bring Jamal James, and, and, and Officer Jamal James into nothing, but he can't tell me at, before the last meeting that, wow, did I ask him saying, ooh, do you need more security or police department due to where too much is happening? Like I said, due to where now what I'm hearing is, I don't know if this is a connection with the police department and the security guards or not, but after that Friday, with what shelter in place, over eight and nine fights going on available, due to where something has to be done, either more police or security on scene, but then another point that was made, due to where some of the security guards and teachers, they don't want to break up the fight, due to where they- up the fight, due to where they don't want to be held responsible with a lawsuit if someone gets hurt, pulling them, yanking to her, similar to what the police department did to me. So, so like I said, please, I, I think matters, due to where needs to be handled more at New Brunswick High School, I mean, come on, it's just getting outrageous, due to where with that many fights in one day. I'm, and I, so like I said, I'm not going against the, 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 due to where the security guards, I understand what they're saying, but maybe time for body cameras for the security guards, or we're gonna need more officers up there, and you will see it under the comments, even though all the videos were taken down, but comments are still up there saying, come on, more security or more police at New Brunswick High School is definitely needed. Thank you.
Any other public wishes to address the council on the resolutions, somebody?
Good evening, once again, uh, wanted to ask about item eight, the accreditation for the police department, when is their next accreditation?
Lieutenant Hoover, do you have that information?
We will be due again, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, and is it possible that the standards for that accreditation be provided to the public?
Is that the public information, the standards of accreditation?
It must be back to, uh, what's that, you know?
So you want to see a Friday tour, is it that they're breaking?
Yeah, exactly, and I, I've been promised that, that information would be shared with me last time, and then unfortunately, Sergeant Patrick Evans Renee gone to promise, I never followed through, so.
We'll see if that's something I will provide you.
Okay, thank you. Move on, and I also want to say, I do appreciate your questions and asking the question before opening to the public, so that we could get more information about what's on your agenda tonight, I do appreciate that, um, and it has answered many of my questions, so I do want to ask, uh, about that Sears project, item thirty, three different agreements, one of them is the services agreement, how long is that for? Is that also in perpetuity, or is that thirty years?
That's my implication, yes.
Perpetuity.
Perpetuity, okay, and how does that work with, uh, the town halls, right? There'll presumably be some type of homeowners association, do they bear any responsibility once that comes into the picture, or is it only the developer forever responsible?
Any other questions?
Well, that, that, that particular, uh, effort is contained within the, the body of the agreements. This first agreement with respect to the developer, once the community and association is formed, there'll be a shared responsibility with the developer, project, the developer, and the condo association.
Thanks, and how about, oh, I'm sorry, this one is being held, the city clerk, uh, the liquor license resolution, can I ask one?
I think we need to, we need a bit of clarification, some information, so we will be here for the next minute.
Okay. And yeah, can I hear a little bit about the, the additions to the resol- to the agenda here? You have thirty-three and thirty-four, we're adding today, um, apparently FEMA, uh, granting the city some supplies, can I understand, you know, what, what's coming to us and, and, uh?
Recurring the funding?
Yeah.
Sure, my question, oh, so the two grants that are on there, they're federal emergency management grants, FEMA, their assistance fire fighter grants are there for emergency bailout systems, where they're used if firefighters get themselves on upper floors and they get themselves in a high risk condition and they need to evacuate, they can do so out of that, as well as the second application is for a rescue truck, we need, we need a rescue truck.
Thanks, and that bailout system, how many people can that assist? Is that just for one firefighter, or is it a system that serves more than one?
That's just to assist, uh, each firefighter, so for every firefighter that we have, it's all the suppression efforts, that's their own personal protective system.
So that's more than one?
It's one. Or, or it serves everyone?
It serves everyone.
Serves everyone, it's applying for up to every firefighter.
Okay, I think that's all I have on the resolution, no, I'm sorry, one more, the Corona Bar liquor license, can I ask the line, I wanted to ask about, what's the status of that, the special ruling?
Madam President, the liquor license has been inactive since twenty twenty, so the Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control has asked that the approval be a special ruling.
Okay, and no plans at the moment for?
No plans.
That's all, thank you.
Anybody else want to tell me about the resolutions?
John, officer, I'm going to ask well, number thirty, valid agreement, is that just for Clifton Avenue, or does it also include Cotter Drive on purpose?
Clifton Avenue, Cotter Drive, the near portion of the property which, but, do we call that?
Okay, yeah, it just said Clifton Avenue, so I just want to make sure, included everyone?
He does.
I, I apologize, council, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, we, we.
Anybody else want to tell me about the resolutions? Resolutions?
Councilmember Castaneda?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Secor Ludwig?
Yes.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. So before, I'm going to the final portion of the meeting, I just wanted to say that, um, last week was really, well, this week, some of the vehicles were wrecked, and I had a great time, um, and I saw some of you reading to the kids in our schools, uh, it was such a great experience, I, I love when I get to see the kids, our kids, and see how bright and smart, great questions, um, that they have, um, so it was really a, a nice way of spending time, that's really with them. Also, uh, any questions, or any comments for the council?
Any, it's great, okay? I was asking about another, another question.
Yeah, some of the questions, yeah.
That's a quick jump there, huh?
Not nearly as tall, so.
So I know that, uh, the last meeting, I, you know, there was some, there was gonna be a question about our testing framework that I've done, so I've been asking Mr. Bruce if he was, uh, an update on that, and it actually stayed.
Sure. As a member of the council, uh, as the state of Jersey implemented new testing guidelines, the city contracted with multiple labs to approve and perform required analysis. This is not a one-stop shop, uh, because there is no one simple lab, a single lab that is equipped to perform all the required tests, therefore multiple labs are being used. As the labs received samples and testing began, timely results were hampered by effects of COVID. Like many businesses, the labs experienced a higher degree of personnel shortage and turnover. These personnel issues contributed to a lack of timely communication that negatively impacted the reporting of test results. In certain cases, delaying communication would put the timing parameters beyond the accepted timeframe for collecting samples and cause insufficient or failed test.
Thank you. At this time, we're gonna get ready to open the, a floor for public comment. Any member of the public wishes to make a comment? You have up to five minutes, one time up, you may push the mic.
My name is Paul King, my residence is three Oxford Street, and I'd like to, I have a problem with the homeless situation on Oxford Street, behind, we have a big house behind the BP gas station, and it's been an ongoing situation with the police of having the homeless remove from my home, the house has been destroyed, and it's an ongoing situation, they were just there today, and I have police reports that are about A-Hive, about all the homeless that we, I have, living on my property and destroying it, and all the tickets I get from the city in New Brunswick for the garbage that they bring there. I just would like to get this, I have police reports, and I'd just like to know what I'm supposed to do with this situation.
So you, so you say, Mr. J, is he able to communicate himself?
Well, like I said, I told you, he's a little older now, he's going through a situation.
Thank you.
Okay, she had, is it, let her speak, because she has all the information now, and she has the photographs.
Like I said, due to where, what, remember, I, I was against Mr. Jones on Jones Avenue, but like I said, I'm here for Mr. Jones, due to where, what, I have rescued him three times already, like I said, he's not the same, after he told me he had heart surgery, he's not able to lean over, that was the time I volunteered and I cut his grass for free, but now I'm gonna provide you with the evidence, due to where I told you, Mr. Dean was not present, due to where I didn't say specifically to tell his business where he was, due to where the video to show, wow, if he's out there, his house is boarded up where somebody broke in, out of the past six months, you, I had the pictures showing, wow, the homeless pissing, cracking in his yard, using his water, taking showers, due to where that's when I called down here to the mayor's office as well, I said, wow, please tell me, due to where, did someone, did Mr. Dean sell his house, did someone trick him, due to where I wasn't getting in his business, that's where a man was there, staying there, due to where that was his house now. How, now you, and I hope you understand, due to where, like I said, he's getting older, just like my mom is going through confusion, but this is the evidence to show, this is no longer Mr. Dean with this garbage, how they threw all the garbage out of his house and put beds in his house to sleep in. This is the pictures, or, uh, videos, evidence, due to where what's going on, but what the, what was the New Brunswick Police Department doing? Nothing.
Well, let me ask Mr. Dean, because he says that he has police reports, so obviously the police has been there. What have the police done when they go into your house, to your property?
They bring them out, they would bring out the individual, they'd hand cut them, put them in the vehicle, and take them away.
Okay.
But it's been ongoing, an ongoing situation that has now gotten very much out of hand. I'm afraid at my age to walk into my own house, and I've lived there for over seventy-five years, it's been my home, we, and it's just now to the point of, uh, I, I don't know what to say, because it's just out of hand, the homeless are all over the place, uh, they're hanging out at the BP gas station, and I'm the prop- property next to it, so they're in my driveway, in my garage, in the workshop, in the house, you know, it, it's to the point now where I don't know how the situation can be remedied, you know, you, there's just too many, and I just noticed yesterday that they went, the, the third house on Hale Street, number three seventy-six, it has all the homeless and all the debris in that house has been just thrown all over the place, it's just a shambles, and I, I don't know what the situation is in society today for this, but I am sick and tired, I'm afraid to go into my own house, because I can't, and the house is alarmed, they've cut the alarms, they've taken the heating system out, the, the two furnaces, you know, so it's not just, I'm collecting crap, it's like, it's, it's just, I've had several vehicles stolen, and, you know, I don't know what to say anymore, it's just a situation, has to be remedied, because it's ongoing. My neighbors, you know, I, I'm the last survivor on that street, there's, everybody is new, I, you know, we're the last holdout, as you want to say, we've had, we had the monument company on the corner, so it's just now to the point of, with the homeless, I don't know what to do anymore. You know, you, you can't, I can't attack them, I can't, you know, confront them, because I'm afraid, I.
No, no, you shouldn't, keep calling the police.
Oh, I have the police reports to prove it, I mean, they were just there yesterday to do it, and it's like, it's, it's an, you know, I, I, it, it's, it's ongoing.
Even the burnt mattresses?
Yeah, the burnt mattresses, the garbage, you know, dump, uh, TV sets, it, it's out of hand, I mean, bicycles.
You, you, you know, you time yourself, but I want to continue to, can I talk to you after the meeting, because I'm gonna get some information, I don't know the answer to your concern, I am concerned with what you're going through, so maybe I can find out what can we do, right? What order, I just see who can help you, but I, I, you time yourself, but I want to talk to you later, if it's possible, okay?
Okay, what, anybody who want to go to the evidence stores too?
You could give it to the, um, clerks.
Like I said, you'll see the evidence of, due to where the people trespass.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, hello, hello, City Council, um, my name is Robert Vasquez, and, uh, my name is Robert Vasquez, and I intend to Buntic High School. Um, I bought a car, I, I brought a fellow classmate today who is just as passionate in making Buntic a better place for everyone, and is currently helping me spark this movement. We come today because we believe that sixteen and seventeen-year-olds deserve the right to vote in Board of Education elections. We came here last time to spark the conversation about this very issue. As many you, as many of you are aware, students are still struggling, and it's unfortunate, it's unfortunately been like that for a very long time, from the violence to the destructive behavior, and I remember hearing similar issues as a young child, and it, and it upsets me, that, that schools like the Buntic High School are still facing similar issues. I'm not an expert, but empowerment among our youth and residents, among our residents is not as big as we thought. We see that in our voter turnout participation. Last year, we only had two point eight percent of voters turn out for the Board of Education elections, that's six hundred, that's six hundred and thirty voters out of the twenty-one thousand eligible voters. This is a current trend that doesn't include the student's voice, the student's input, and the student's concern, because last time I checked, the age to vote, the age to vote is eighteen. Even with the voting age being eighteen, we don't hear many voices of students in City Hall or in Board of Education meetings. Public meetings like Board of Education have been practically empty for a while, and there are many reasons for that. It's not, it's not only the lack of empowerment, but the lack of student education, and I talked to many students from after-school clubs to your classrooms, and many don't know who the mayor is, or don't know where the Board of Education holds their meetings. Many students don't know where to take their ideas and concerns, and because of that, that can leave many feeling powerless and voiceless. That results in places like the Buntic High School becoming a fighting zone. We're losing students to the toxic environment that has, that the school has been fighting to contain, but as you can tell from the stories, and unfortunately, the school fights, the toxic environment has not been contained, and it's growing stronger, and we cannot keep living in an environment like that, we can't let an environment like that take over our schools, we need change, we need a voice, and we want to vote, we want to use that vote to improve our schools and address the issues we face. This reform can do a lot, can, can do a lot for the students of Buntic. We see this reform being implemented across the country, Maryland, Maryland was the first to allow their sixteen-year-olds to vote in the Board of Education elections, and there was an increase of voting turnout thanks to the newly eligible voters, and in other countries like Argentina or Germany, they passed similar reforms that would give students the right to vote in their local elections. I think the Buntic should be on the side of students and history. It's time that we empower students, because empowering the school, the schools means we are empowering our great city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Genesis, I'm also a student at Buntic High School, and I'm involved in the school and in the city, I join after-school activities, clubs, meetings, and the time that I spend, I've noticed that, so I also create journals downtown, like if you ever pass by any C P R's, I'm on the square, like, I'm involved in the school and because of that, I've noticed a lot of people, I see that, I see the great potential that school has. There are tons of gifted and talented students in front of who hide their gifts to not stand out, the environment that was created has stopped their peers from being prideful and showcasing their mind and voice, but seeing that from New Brunswick, people give us nasty stares or like seaside commentary, because of the statements around what New Brunswick is, that we are violent and uneducated. And, but in reality, there's more to us than just that, we are smart individuals who have voices and opinions. Our school offers a variety of classes ranging from arts to dental classes, we have programs which have our future scholars and added students and added programs to assist students going to college, we have an amazing art community, and we just have, in general, just great students. We have so much good and beauty to us, but all this is the same in the media, all that is seen are the fights and violence. I take pride in my school, and I know that our community is so much more than what is said about it, believe it or not, there are students like me who want to change in the school, who want their voices to be heard, and have ideas. their voices to be heard and have ideas as to how it can become better. The only issue is no one hears us, no one takes us seriously and no one has spoken us up because we are perceived as violent and unreliable. Hence why maybe sixteen, seventeen-year-olds should be able to vote in school board elections. We have ideas, we have inside knowledge. In fact, we have firsthand experience in how the regulations are functioning. All I ask is to give a chance to the students, voices to be heard. If you want to make Brunson High School better, you must listen to the students. At the end of the day, it is a priority for the living and the future of the city. It's not going to be easy to break these barriers, but I have faith that one day the beauty of our school and community will shine. We will not be known as, we will be known as more justified and more educated.
Thank you.
Can the public just address the council?
Hi, yes, Daniel Moore. Due to, I know my questions never I get answered to, due to it's been over four weeks. I asked you about New Brunswick becoming the sanctuary city 2018. Who recommended that? Why haven't I gotten an answer yet? Now, my next question is due to where, please, I'd like to know for Officer Alexander Yunes, when he was suspended, I'd like to know, was he suspended with pay or without pay? And I'm so glad, like I said, thank you, Mr. Crowderwell, due to where, wow, before I even got this letter, wow, did I report February 1st. Wow, how we lied on my report, my police report, saying what happened? Wow, people are saying to me, wow, I've been trying to help somebody. Wow, was I set up and honestly, I always wanted to be a detective, due to where putting pieces together. But I'm just so glad on this police report, due to where with him saying, oh, Ms. Moore did not, did not trust me. Oh, Ms. Moore did not want to be next to me. Oh, she did not trust, trust me with looking at her cellphone or whatever. Please, if I'm hurting, hurting enough, due to where, what would I say? I don't trust an officer for because, due to where, like I said, I'm tired of him following me, harassing me, due to where I had on video Sunday again, what, did he think that I was going to say something to him? Turn around and look at me, she thinking I'm going to say, say something to him? Oh, I have video, I'm a photographer. I got body camera just like we do and I would provide that in court. But one thing, due to where, wow, when we was over there at Walgreens, like I said, I did not start that. Wow, she was in handcuffs because she hit me first. She was on the ground, what? He goes over there and take her out of handcuffs, bring her down to the police station. I get put in handcuffs, struggling, due to where, like I said, with my arm dislocated, torn in three spots. But wow, please, I want you to see the video. Wow, how she released before me and I'm still in handcuffs, sitting there crying in pain, due to where, what? He made me sit there and say that I had to, wait till Ms. Lopez come down and be, and for her to check me and release me? What type of officer do you have where he's been suspended sixty days already for not reporting the truth? Or yes, New Brunswick has a damn good lawsuit coming against them. Because when I put the pieces together to show, wow, the video, where what, I was the victim getting assaulted both times. And wow, with him helping them, helping him, releasing her from handcuffs and helping her, where what, I got it on video, they all going to turn smile at me, ha, 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 like he's on their side? I don't know what the hell this officer has against me, but I will be saying, as a low contact, I don't want Alexander Yunes, bad free 26, 916, nowhere near me. Because even at that time when I was rescuing Mr. Paul Dean at his house, January 14th, you checked his body camera. What, due to where, when I saw that Mr. Dean, where he, something was wrong, where he had lost confidence, he fell in the house. Wow, so then she comes over here, excuse me, are you a doctor? Yeah, get out of here, start talking to me, wow, just because I'm trying to make sure Mr. Dean is okay? You got body cameras? Every time I asked, this is what, body cameras, what, I gotta pay $600 just to show a body camera? But oh, let them all be ready for when it's time to be court. Like I said, disabled woman, I was only asked to help somebody, but wow, everybody's saying the same thing. What, was this a setup for me? What, just to try to make me look back? And like I said, oh, believe me, I, 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 like I said, I don't like this officer, but like I said many times, a list, due to where, he comes toward me, that was January 9th, oh, yeah, I'm helping a man, yeah, you continue calling 911, Ms. Moore. Wow, the guy collapsed right in front of him. You're going to make it look like I did something wrong? Please, like I said, what is it with this damn officer? Like I said, body camera show and my videos will show as well. What, I did not deserve this, due to where, what, dislocation, three torn, torn in my shoulder, for him having me sitting in that down there downtown with my hands behind my back and what, she's laughing at me because she's not in handcuffs anymore? What type of people do you keep protecting? What, someone to keep breaking the damn law how many times? What, Director Ross, come on, be for real. You are sworn in to follow the law. Well, I'm beginning to see, wow, are you sworn in to tell lies or make excuses for people who keep breaking the law? Where, oh, you said, all he did was just make a mistake on a, on a, on a house or something. Where what, he didn't report things? What type of people are you really trying to protect? But we will see with the lawsuit.
Mr. Aaron Chaney? My understanding that Dubontic is not sanctuary.
I've been sitting at this table for years, Mr. Aaron Chaney, and I, I recall more than I can say that you've ever adopted a resolution in the city as a sanctuary city.
And I was going to say, I was waiting for the end of the year until the rest of my regulations. I've been here for a while. We have not, there have been some talks about it, but no, no, it was just, it was against the local city. But what, you know, in a sense where we are not, we have never been a sanctuary city.
Hi, I'm Emily Luss, I'm here to sit down. So a couple things, first I want to say thank you to, to you for the questions they asked about the resolution. I found that they were very informative and I appreciate you having relevant speakers providing information. So that's great, you're more than pleased. I also want to echo sentiments shared by the students earlier. I think it's really, you know, amazing to have young people involved and I think that, you know, sixteen and seventeen-year-olds should have the right to vote in school board elections that directly impact their everyday life in a very good way. Few other topics I want to bring up. Somebody and I have raised email and got a response to, which I appreciate, is an area in the library that has a very significant deterioration in the walls. And I got a response from Mr. Drewless that the area's been covered up and there are plans for repair. I appreciate that. Obviously that Dr. Bellman has come out tonight, I appreciate that as well. And my follow-up question on that is, there was still, you know, a lack of clarity on whether the paint contains lead and I'm wondering are there plans to test for that? Because I assume that would need to happen before any repairs can take place.
May I ask, are there comments? Did that take questions, break questions down?
Any other questions? Sure, yes, several other topics. So on George Street, I was wondering if there's an update on the current status there. In efforts to further reach a couple of feedback on that project.
Yes, there's still talks, right? Because Mr. Gordon, we've been just talking a little bit about what are the efforts that C-Markets is doing to getting engagement, community and comments from different sectors.
Yes, well, right now we have the idea, we haven't implemented yet, of putting the plans that we've displayed all year around that DMR presented into some of the windows along the prior of George Street QR code that contains a survey so that we can gather some more information from the public, from the people that live in our community and also the visitors that come into the city and enjoy. But we have to get a little bit more feedback from that, that may help guide the council, you know, in which direction we want to go too. But so we are still gathering information and looking, you know, looking at things from different angles.
So it's a work in progress. And like I said in the past, we're going to continue to have this conversation here and I will give an update once we have anything to obtain. So we will continue that conversation.
Great, I appreciate that. Of course, I think a public survey is a great idea and what we can do to advertise that feedback opportunity better. I know that the daytime homeless center was slated to open on February 20th. I was just wondering if there's any insight into how that's going, what the usage of that service is currently.
To the best of my knowledge, it's going well, but I will get an update. I know Mr. DeGolde did an update at the last meeting, the public board, but I will get an update on that. So the best of my knowledge is this.
Great, I'm glad that that initiative has picked off. I think that's wonderful and as was made clear from the concerns raised by previous interviews, the homelessness issue is really significant and there needs to be a lot more resources put into solving that homeless first. I also want to check back on the process of creating a climate action plan. I believe last time that we, that I asked about it, Mr. Drewless informed me that he did want that the C is that to try and finalize the plan by July 1st, which is now about four months. And I was wondering if we're still on track for that and are there any opportunities between now and then for the public to engage in that process?
Does it sound on track? It sure does. It is on track. If there's any opportunity for the public to offer any feedback?
There will be.
Okay, great, well, that's all that I have, so if you can circle that to the...
So if you could talk a little bit about now about the ladder and the repairs and if there's any way in the paint, any information that you would like, that you might have?
I don't have information. I took it over.
Thank you. So we'll get back to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Charlie Crowder, Dubontic and Brunson today. I do want to start by also commending the young people who came out and spoke very eloquently and supported franchising sixteen, seventeen-year-olds. They are 100% right about the turnout of school elections is very low, so I want to note there's an election April 16th. No matter who you're voting for, people who have the right to vote should use it and come out to vote. But I did want to ask if the council has any thoughts on the proposal that they brought to you to expand the vote to sixteen, seventeen?
Not at this time. I think that everybody's doing a lot of research, have been waiting, the state is also working on that, so we just, and some of us, we spoke to some people after the meetings. I, like I said the last time, I think it's great that the young people are using their voices and they should go to the board of the nation and all stuff and express all of this and some of the concerns that they sort of, probably could be, except the voting part, there's others that they could, should be able to work with the board of education of the school to come to a, some kind of help, a communication, you know, and see how can they better assist their school. So, so there's some there that I'm pretty sure that we would have agreed to vote. Other than the sixth and the fourth.
Thanks for that. I will note that the board of ed actually is having a meeting right now, a 6:00 PM meeting tonight, the conflicts at this point, so that's something that hopefully won't happen again for a while. I think that's at least we can do to engage the public. Thanks for the info on the water quality violations. Just to clarify, were there any violations other than testing violations? Were there any violations with the results of the tests?
I believe there's, Mr. Crowder, less access to the state resources on the state website. I don't have the law committed memory, but you're welcome to add that list if you'd like.
So the website?
How about I ask this way? There's a consumer confidence report that has to come out in June. Are there going to be violations that have to be disclosed in there? And if so, what tier of the violations?
I'm pretty sure without knowing anything, you know, if there is, if it's, if we need to do it, then we'll do it. If there's not, then there won't be any.
Could you maybe ask the water director if the violations will be in the consumer conference?
I'm going to ask that question because we already gave you some input. But like I said, we are, we will provide whatever needs to be, is required of us, has happened in many years, you know, twelve years. So if there's something that needs to be done, that it won't be done if it doesn't, we have a great board of ed, so we'll see.
Thanks. The fire director, I had asked what happened to his vehicle, the fire director vehicle? Did that, was that involved in a crash recently as well as the deputy chief vehicle? But we're now confirming it was in a crash on January 9th. Was there another crash?
You've already spoke about those situations at the last meeting. So I don't know what else I need to be for, Mr. Crowder, if you could just...
How many vehicles, how many vehicles did the director of the fire department crash in the past year? We know of one confirmed. I'm asking if it's more than that. What's that?
Just one.
Just one?
As far as I know, there was a minor, just one.
Okay, thank you. The director has been in many crashes, I believe, over 20 now. Some of them have led to litigation against the city, including one in May of 2014. That litigation was settled recently. Can you tell me how much money did the city taxpayers pay to settle that litigation?
I will find that information for you, Mr. Crowder.
Okay. And when was his permission to operate city vehicles revoked or suspended? When did that happen?
We provided that information, the last meeting.
We did? There was no date given? You just said that he was no longer able to operate. You're just asking for the date? Will I be able to get that?
I see that you did ask, but I'm not sure if I'm able to, but I want to...
Thanks. I do want to note that there was a shooting on Stevens Street on Monday. Three shots were fired. This has not been publicized widely. I know the city didn't use the social media or the NEXL to alert the public, but I just want to note this is another example of a serious crime that ought to be publicized but was not. Can you give me any information on that?
We already have given you, Mr. Crowder, the guidelines for using NEXL and everything else, so if there's anything that has changed, something has changed since. So any other questions?
Sure. There's a serious crime that somebody played with him related to Senator Menendez. Do you still support him?
Thank you for the time. Appreciate it. Yes.
Just for clarity, I believe Mr. Crowder was asking if fire directors involved in an accident this year. I thought he was referring to calendar year 2024, if that was correct.
Okay, 2024.
This year. Yeah, I said in the last year. So was he involved in any in 2023? Was the fire director involved in any crashes in 2023?
Councilmember Castania?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferguson? Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Gaskin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sacoa Ludwig?
Yes.
Council vice president Anderson?
Yes.
Council president Escobar?
Yes.